After we moved emergency management from health to the police department, we got looking at the strategic plan for emergency management. And the one that we had coming in from health to the police department was about 15 pages long and simply consisted of a large number of definitions and a little bit of overview. And the chief made arrangements through a contact that he had at a time when he was just mayor captain, for me to, as county councillor, to sit down with St. Louis County about their plan and how drastically different it was. The big reason that it's important to have that drastic difference is that if you haven't done some planning, if you haven't talked to your other municipal agencies that are in emergency management, if you haven't talked to your fire departments and the Red Cross and everybody else, and then come up with what everybody's responsibilities are and then eventually exercise that plan, then you're not really ready for an emergency. At least not a full-scale-out emergency in this county. So he began having his staff completely rework and come up with a plan. And they have done over two years' worth of work with community organizations to come up with this. So now he's the chief and the person who took his place is Captain Tom Cook. And Captain Cook's gonna do a brief overview for you of this and some of why it's important. And the reason, timing-wise, that we wanted you to be aware of this is Steve will eventually, as head of emergency management under Missouri statute, need to adopt it. And he wanted to make sure you guys had a look at it in overview, or if you would like the whole thing, we're glad to kill a couple of trees and give you one for you to go through. But if you want to read it, before he adopted it, he wanted to make sure you guys had a chance to review it and hear it and have input. So we won't bore you to death all night, but Captain's gonna go through and there's copies of... We sent this out on Friday. Sorry, it was close to the end of the day, but... And did you bring yours?
Is that the same thing?
Oh, and then these are the SS. It's all yours, Captain.
All mine, alright. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this overview to you all. My name is Captain Tom Cook. I've been with the Sheriff's Department slash Police Department now, as of last Tuesday, for 35 years. So it's been a pleasure working here and I still enjoy coming to work every day. Currently, I'm a captain over the Bureau of Support... I'm sorry, Bureau of Special Enforcement, which includes not only emergency management, but the SWAT team, the bomb team, the fugitive unit, the helicopter unit, the park rangers. And so again, I'm very happy to be here today to present this to you and I won't try to take up too much of your time. So as we start to go through, here's some of the items that I thought was important to bring up to you all tonight. Who's involved in creating the plan? What is an emergency operation plan? What is the role of that plan as we deal with disasters and incidents that happen here in the county? What is an EOP is not? Why we need an emergency operations plan? St. Charles County Emergency Operations Plan Structure? Emergency support functions, which we'll talk more about that just here in a minute? And what does a plan do for us? Who was involved in making up the plan? All the county departments within St. Charles County government were involved, as were the fire protection districts and the ambulance district here in St. Charles County. And tonight, just briefly, I'm gonna have Rob Wiley address, from the fire department's perspective, why this plan is important and why they participated in it and why, as we move forward, it's important that we have a plan that we follow when these incidents come up. So, Chief?
Thank you, Captain. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. The emergency operations plan is really a special place in our heart. It's kind of what we live by. It's kind of like our bible for emergency response. It sets the tone, not only for what we need to be prepared to do, but what we're going to do if something occurs. And we've been very, very happy with the process of this revision of this plan. It was overdue to be done. It's a... I mean, as you can see, just by weight, it's an arduous process to redo. It's very detailed, it's very specific, and it's very useful when you have an overall emergency. The thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, though, is the fact that as important as the plan is, the planning process is more important. The actual, physical act of making this plan, of working together with basically every division of county government, with every law enforcement agency, with every fire agency, with EMS agency, all sitting down together to put this together builds the relationship that really carries the day when something happens. The plan itself is really valuable and critical for those hours after the first four or five hours. So if you think back to the tornado in 2013, those first couple of hours, you know, we're all working on our basic knowledge of the plan. We don't have it out in front of us. So it kind of... Those relationships that we built putting this plan together are what carry us through those initial hours. And then, as things settle into a routine, if you can call any emergency a routine, that's where this thing comes into play. And we make sure we're crossing our i's and dotting our t's, making sure we're meeting all the statutory requirements that may get us reimbursement from the state, from the feds, making sure we have the proper chains of command in place, making sure these ESF, the essential functions, are all being fulfilled. So we have all those folks at the table to make good joint decisions and a true unified command structure. In 2013, with the tornado that came through, it worked out flawlessly. This plan wasn't done yet, but we were well underway in doing it. So the benefits of the planning process showed themselves. I serve as president of the Emergency Services Association for the county. That represents all 10 fire districts and the ambulance district. So I'm speaking on behalf of them, as well as the Cotterville Fire District, and has been a fire... in the fire service here in the county for 30 years. And this is the greatest step forward we've taken. The value of the process and the value of the plan, I think, are gonna pay dividends well into the future. So I applaud you for undertaking it and applaud you for taking the time to understand it a little bit more, because as elected officials, you all have a role in the plan. And not only is it important to develop the plan and develop the relationships, but the next step is, after this is adopted, to exercise it, to become familiar with it, to be conversant with it. So no, you're not gonna remember everything that's in a 300-page or whatever it is document, but you'll know that the document exists and then you can use it as your reference to see where your role is in the plan, your role is as the incidents develop, and what we're gonna be counting on you all as elected officials to give us in ways of support. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
After this process, in emergency, our rule is to get the hell out of the way. He's gonna do her job.
But this also... It is... It's been a huge task to put this together, but when Mr. Elman adopts it and the county adopts it, it's not done. It's something that really is a living document. It evolves all the time. Not only because people change, technologies change, schools of thought, as far as incident management, change. So this is something that'll get revisited on almost a continual basis and tweaked on an almost continual basis. And what you'll find is it meshes right in with our sister and brother counties around the state, so that we're all working from a plan that has similar functions, similar structure, and then when we all get together, because when something happens, it's big, it's not gonna be just St. Charles County. You know, we saw that in Ferguson, where we were very, very much integrated with St. Louis County. And the fact that we are all speaking the same language, we are all kind of playing from a similar playbook, made us much more effective and made us safer. So I appreciate your time. Thanks for the opportunity. Yes, sir?
How far down the chain of command is there supposed to be a working knowledge of this?
I would say it's down into the company officer level in the fire department, so our captains. We have a cursory knowledge all the way down the chain of command, right down to the newest firefighters, aware of it and aware where they fit into it. But as far as a working knowledge of the plan, for us, it would be our operational supervisors, captains and up.
For us, it'll be down to the sergeant level. And what Captain Cook could cover, the ESF, what the functions are for the different sections, they'll be... They won't be familiar with it, but they'll be familiar with what they're supposed to do when we show up and work with the fire service, EMS. They'll know what their function is as a police officer. We will know at the command level, sitting with Mr. Elman, informing you what the overall basis is. As we did those tours, we were talking about the operating, the planning room, where you folks would sit and meet. This is where your role comes in, this is what you're doing, clearly working with him, guiding us with what needs to be done.
And what you'll see is, a large part of this document are those service functions, those ESFs. And they're very specific to the law enforcement role, the fire role, the utilities role, the public official's role. So I'm not very familiar, for example, with the highway department's role as an ESF, but I know they're there. And I worked... FEMA sent me up to Connecticut during Hurricane Irene, and we were in their statewide EOC. And each has a label, that ESF function for fire, EMS, utilities. So when something came in that was utility-based, for instance, or the highway, I knew where to go. I knew that's the person I'd go talk to, you know, and if I had a question, I could look through my little index and see which ESF... Because they're all staffed when you have a full stand-up of your emergency operation center. So it becomes kind of a reference book of where to find answers for your issues. So, yes, sir?
I have a question in that regard. I agree with Mr. Elman, when there's an emergency, we need to get the hell out of your way. But the same token is, I've had calls before when floods from duck club owners that are saying that, you know, there's kids down there running around through the deep water up to no good, and I'll call the Sheriff's Department. Trees, I live on a county road, sometimes a tree falls over the road. Most of the time, it's fire guys that are taking that tree out so they can get their vehicles through. But if we have some type of guide, like you said, you need to know who to go to, because for a lot of people, like in my community at least, they think that, you know, I should know anything but what happens that goes in county. So if there's a wire down on the road, who do I call? If there's a problem and the flood plain's in the flood, who do I call? If there's a tree on the county road, who do I call? If there's a tree on the state...
That's the nice thing about this, too. It doesn't have to be an emergency. It can be some routine things, and you can look through it and see who's responsible for what and who maybe I should call.
So whatever that is that's in there, I don't need that 350-page document, but I wouldn't mind having that, just so I could respond.
You need to call 949-3023, which is emergency management. And it is staffed, phone, there's a duty officer on 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And if you need to get the fire department or water patrol or the police or anything out there where there's been an emergency, they'll get you there. Otherwise, you can call dispatch.
When you make that phone call, they're at the EOC. They know, okay, it's a power line down. They get the book, they flip it over. They're having somebody, like the chief just said, they look over. All three needs a phone call. We get it, and that's what people, oh my God, I gotta call. No, you call us, because we have numbers that are accessible to us that are not accessible to the general public, because their lines get shut down.
For the utilities.
So when you give us that phone call, they flip over to the... Utility person, whatever, and they're instantly on it.
Do you guys wear that procedure?
No. EMA is a great call for you guys. And, you know, those of you who've been around a while, back 15, 20 years ago, EMA, excuse my bluntness, but was useless. They didn't do what they were supposed to do. They were kind of a second thought agency within county government. But I'll tell you, within the last 10 years, EMA has become very robust, very centralized as far as a good source of information, a good clearinghouse for anything you need to know that goes on in the county, as far as the types of things you're saying, Mr. Cronin. And that centralized number, because the EMA folks, they have my cellphone number, they have his cellphone number, they have the utility numbers, and if they can't answer, they know where to send you.
949...
We'll send it out to all...
3023.
Yeah, 3023.
When we have a... I normally just call Joanne or Steve or someone, but...
That works, too. You can do that.
But if there's another way, like when there's high winds, a lot of times in June, we had a lot of wind and all those trees were knocked down on 94, virtually closed, you know, through bushes, wildlife. And the county does a pretty good job, but who does the road clearing for trees? Is that MoDOT or who would do that?
If it's a state highway, MoDOT does. Like in our fire district, a lot of times, we can get out faster and we need to be able to get through there if there's a medical emergency or a fire. So I'll send a couple of guys out with chainsaws and a pickup truck if we know a road is blocked. But then we notify MoDOT to come out and get those state highways open, especially if it's something beyond our capability. But for small things, you know, we go hit it right away, because it benefits us to be able to get where we need to go as well.
And the other thing is, is what do we do with, like, ice storms? That's another thing out in my area that's pretty bad, because MoDOT, of course, they're gonna hit their places they need to go to first, but like our roads would be icy and you can't even get around.
Again, the EMA folks, because they're... They have somebody, as Joanne said, the duty officer's on 24 hours a day. And any time there's even the threat of severe weather, high winds, ice storms, snow storms, they're in the EOC monitoring it and they're putting bulletins out to all of us. We get on conference calls with them with the National Weather Service. So again, I think calling EMA, if you have questions about weather events or anything, they're a great clearinghouse for all those things.
So do you have a good relationship with MoDOT on that particular stuff?
Well, they're notified. Other than that, it's in their hands. I mean, they're gonna... If it's affecting several counties, they make the call for that.
Oh, I understand, yeah.
As far as the county roads and stuff, we have the highway department. We have, you know, they're... Usually, they have somebody there and we were on the phone working with them. When we get the phone calls for the slick spots, it usually comes to us. We know, if it's a state highway, we notify MoDOT, and then they're supposed to take care of it. If it's county highways, our highway department's on it. And we need to... As the patrol cars cruise, we've taught them, we've trained them. So they're now spotters for ice, whatever, trees down. And they're... They learn now, instead of just calling dispatch, they send it right to emergency management, who turns around to the representative from the highway department, hey, we got a slick spot. We won't say climb that hill, because that's a state highway, but pick a county road.
But that is always a problem, because they don't even go up it.
It is.
And then we got the fire trucks out there trying to throw salt down there to get up it, you know? But...
But the EMA is a great central clearinghouse, and it also ensures you don't get duplications. You know, so instead of 15 people calling MoDOT, for instance, if they get that one centralized person from EMA that's making the call, it tends to get a little bit more of a rapid response than them getting flooded by a bunch of calls from five different directions. It's a good central in-and-out pathway for information for all the state and local agencies. And the robustness of that agency, I can't tell you what a change it is over the last 10 years. And it's been a huge, huge benefit in the county. But I go back to the tornado again in 2013. If you had told me 15 years ago that when we had this event hit our area, that we'd have a mobile command post on-site within 20 minutes, that in that mobile command post, I have the chief of police, I have the county administrator, the county attorney, Mr. Elman came up. So anything that I needed to make things happen, all I had to do was look to my right or to my left, and there it was. And I mean, talk about the pinnacle of a unified command post, and that's why things went well. And this really codifies that unified command and takes it all the way down the road, so...
For those of you who had the chance to tour in St. Louis County, that's why you saw the tables out there like that with the markers for who was where. It's because that's where the information's coming to, that's where the information's going out from, as you face down all the issues you have to recover. So if I don't, they'll move you all along. I don't want to cut off any questions, but you're never gonna get to your second and third topic, so...
You have 10 minutes for this subject.
That long? I didn't know you'd give us that long. Okay. Let me just mention to you that COAD and LEPC are both groups that have a number. The COAD stands for Community Organizations Active in Disaster. And I think, like, Miriam Mahan's group is on that and...
Yep.
...Red Cross and all that kind of thing.
We meet with them monthly.
And the LEPC, can you talk to them a little bit about that, like, real quickly?
Sure. The LEPC is a local emergency planning committee. It's tasked with planning, preparing for hazardous materials emergency, as required by federal law. Members are recommended by Mr. Elman and confirmed by the Missouri Response Commission. Membership includes representatives from first responders, such as the police, the fire, transportation, hazmat, and community groups. And those... And that organization meets quarterly.
Okay.
Okay.
Why don't we move on, since you've only got 10 minutes to what is the EOP?
If you don't have any other questions for me, I need to go to another board meeting.
Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. As the chief kinda hit on what is the EOP, it's a physical document that outlines the county's emergency operations philosophy. Again, the document's been written, it's had a lot of input from a lot of different people, and it's certainly subject to change as we move forward. So incidents that occur either across the country, or like down in Joplin, for an example, where there are lessons learned to come out of that, we review our plan, we look at those lessons learned, and we see if we need to tweak anything. And then we have our own history to look at. You know, we had the tornado in 2013. In the last 15 years, I know we've had incidents from storms and floods, that St. Charles County's been declared a disaster area 10 times within the last 15 years. So obviously, those incidents, we can learn from that. We did an after-action review, as an example, on the 2013 tornado, and we took things from that and tweaked our plan as we were moving forward to where we find ourselves sitting today. There are four main phases in the emergency operations plan. Those phases, one is mitigation. And basically, mitigation is those things that we try to do before the tornado, before the flood occur, that we can do to mitigate our loss of life or our possible damage of property. So an example of that would be like our emergency siren system that we have. If we get a warning that a thunderstorm, severe thunderstorm or a tornado's imminent, we would set those emergency sirens off. Obviously, on a government level like here, if somebody wants to put a huge building up in the flood plain, you might not approve something like that, because we know that when that next flood comes, it could be a disaster and people's lives and property could be in danger there. Preparedness, that's what this plan is all about. It's focused on being prepared, and again, as we talked about, exercising the things that we come up, we identify that we need to be ready to respond when this... when these incidents do occur. Our response, that's actually after the tornado, the flood, or whatever incident it is, a hazmat incident, that's our actual response. We take the things from the plan, we take the stuff that we train on, and we go out and we start managing that incident. So if it's a tornado, we start going out and, you know, doing our searches, getting our people, getting into hospitals, finding housing for those who are displaced, et cetera. Recovery, that's the ongoing process that goes on after we've done that, the first couple of days after that. People are gonna need housing, they're gonna need their roadways cleared, they're gonna need their debris removed, they're gonna need financial assistance, be able to apply for grants, et cetera. So that's that part of the plan.
Let me just mention that when Tom talks about exercising, when he and I were kinda going through his presentation last week, he made a really good point, which is that he's new to this, but he's been doing the SWAT commander thing for a long time. Two days every month, the entire SWAT team's together. One day to shoot and one day to run through a possible scenario. Now, even after all these years, they probably haven't covered every single scenario they'll run into, but those guys are used to working together and they know when something happens, how everybody reacts. And that's something we haven't done a lot of with emergency management, and we really had to get this done, so we could move to tabletop exercises and then to eventual full-out... You see those in the news sometimes of, you know, having it on the ground, people are actually role-playing a disaster, you get the schoolkids to help you or whatever. So those are the things we're gonna be moving into as the years come up. So, sorry.
No, no problem. That picture you're looking at, again, a lot of times, we think pie in the sky, you know, 9/11 occurred in New York, Oklahoma City's in Oklahoma. Well, what's that... You know, how's that impact us here in St. Charles County, Missouri? Well, that picture there is an arrow picture of the... Part of the damage when the tornado came through. So that's... Imagine that neighborhood, how that was impacted, and imagine if we, as law enforcement and first responders and all the different entities that are involved with this, if we're not prepared to deal with this, imagine what kind of disaster that's gonna be and how disappointed the citizens are gonna be in our performance if we don't have a plan in place and we're prepared to deal with something like this. What an EOP is not, it's not a checklist where you go down and it's not... It's not an operations manual. So in other words, when the disaster hits, we don't get out the... We don't get out the book and go, okay, it's a tornado, what do we do? The incident commanders will have their own checklist, most of the time already done in advance. Like I used to be in charge of the SWAT team, and if we get a hostage situation, we've already practiced and we have a checklist that we go through, the different things we need to make sure we're doing during that incident compared to, like, serving a search warrant. It's different, but yet, we'll try to cover as many things as we can, and for the most part, as long as we have that basic checklist in place, the incident commander, be it fire, police, community health, whoever it is, they'll already have those in place. This plan is not that. It doesn't tell them how to do their job. We leave that up to the people that do the job on a daily basis. So it's not intended for that. Why having an EOP? Well, I think we've covered a lot of those issues here, the need for it. Again, it's a common ground, it's getting the different elements that would be involved in handling any type of incidents here in the county, getting them in, and everybody has a voice, and we work together based on what we put in this plan. Again, it enables the application of best practices, and those are lessons learned from previous incidents that have occurred. That's why we always have an after-action review. So if we need to tweak our plan, or if we got something in our plan, we go, hey, we thought this was gonna work out good, but in reality, it didn't. So then we have the ability to change that.
For Tom, why don't you skip forward to the ESFs?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry.
Nope.
It's just I know the council chair's about to slam the door on us.
Yep. In front of you have the ESF, Emergency Support Function. This tells us here, if we have an incident, not all of these... Not all of the emergency support functions, not every unit here will necessarily be called. It would depend on what type of incident we have. But this gives you an idea that if we have a tornado and we need transportation or we need housing, if you go to that, it gives you a kind of a guide, who is gonna be responsible for that as the primary agency and who would also be supplementing that. So that gives you an idea, again, during an incident, whatever resource we need, this tells you who's in charge of that. So that's usually a good thing, as an elected official. If you know we have somebody that calls you and says, hey, my house was damaged or destroyed in a tornado, and I'm not getting any assistance finding a place to live, well, you can kind of go to this and find out, well, who's in charge of helping people with housing? And you could refer to this document here, which is in the plan. So that's why we have this, and that's why I made a copy of it available to you. Again, we talked about the need for exercising this plan, and again, Chief Wiley talked about how good it was to get everybody together, to put the plan together. Now, when we go out and exercise this plan, which we already do some exercises, but with this plan now, we've gotten more and more involvement, again, that'll help build the relationships that we're gonna need when the disaster does strike, to go out and properly and professionally handle these incidents. So are there any questions of me? And I know we've really covered a lot of ground here tonight.
What about preventative stuff? And I'm gonna give you a scenario that I'm in the middle of right now.
Yes, sir.
I represent the city of Flint Hill. I get a thing from their engineer that shows they had a flash flood in the spring, and there's LP bottles right along US 61 that were banging together in this flash flood. So he says, the culverts at Highway P need to be replaced. I drive out there, I go in the culvert, I look, and there's four-foot of rock washed into the culvert. I sent Tom Evers an email about it and said, you know, could you take a look at that culvert, because the people upstream are getting flooded, and one of them's a propane facility that's right next to a major highway, not a good situation. He never gets back to me. I sent it to Mr. Wright, the new guy, okay, from MoDOT, and he comes back and says, well, the culvert's about 10 foot tall, there's about three to four foot of rock washed in the bottom of it. He says, well, there's no sense for us to clean it, take, clean that out of there, because it's just gonna fill back in. And I said, well, that's like saying you're not gonna cut your grass, it's gonna grow again. But I mean, how do I... Where do I communicate then with you guys to say, you know, we got a flash flood in Flint Hill, you got a problem again on an LP plant there? I mean, is that something... Do you want me to call you on this stuff, Joanne? I don't wanna bug you all the time.
Yeah, you should definitely call us, because we need to talk to... We need to talk to MoDOT about that.
Okay. Well, that's the... If you want... I can do what Joe does and call you or Steve every time, or I can send it on.
No, please, please do.
More weight on your shoulders.
I mean, as...
The MoDOT lawyers will thank us for making them aware.
Exactly.
Engineers might not understand.
Yep.
And it also helps if we know and emergency management knows because now Ida McCain Obenland, who works for Tom, and, you know, she'll start tracking that. So if there is flash flooding, she'll be alerting the fire departments and everybody else on this list of a couple hundred people that she sends stuff to, hey, look, there's a, there's a known and pre-existing hazard there that hasn't been dealt with yet. And you need to be aware of that, about how quickly, you know, water's going to build up or cars getting washed away or whatever the issue's going to be. That constant awareness is part of what she does on a regular basis is to alert all the other first responder and secondary responder organizations that there's an issue out there.
Okay, I'll just, I'll run through you.
Yep, we're out of time. Sorry.
I mean, is there anything, anything you need to cover that we missed?
No, sorry, no.
All right, well, thank you, Captain. Appreciate you coming in.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Any, any concerns you have before Steve says an adoption? Anybody want to see the whole, I can, you can send it out.
No, it's just good, good stuff.
Just tell us what you want us to do. If there's anything that we have a function at all and you want us to do, just as we know it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Is this how we adopt by ordinance? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, actually by state statute, the county executive of the counties.
Wayne, whoever else, Robert, is Robert coming up or who? Who's coming up?
Well, if I get stumped on a question, I'll call Robert.
What, what, what this is about, guys, is, oh, I guess back in, what, 2060, 2007, the federal government started messing with the, the maps and we, Steve, was this, you were county administrator at the time when, when they started changing the maps around. Here's some of the letters, we pulled out some of the letters and Steve was, wrote letters to Luca Myers, some other people protesting it. And I was under the impression, which I was under the wrong impression, that I thought we had disagreed with the, Wayne is going to fill us in and tell us exactly what's going on with the FERMA maps, is that what they're called? And so what, what, what has happened is they revise the maps more currently this year and so we have to abide by the new maps, which we have not adapted the new maps legally, or we're supposed to adapt them by ordinance, is that right, Wayne?
By ordinance and I'm proposing to put that ordinance before you in October.
Okay, and the reason why this is important, guys, is because there's, I think, 4,000 property owners, it's going to change, and I'm one of them, and it, it really upset me because I didn't know about it. And from a 500-year, you buy a piece of property and you're in a 500-year floodplain and then next thing you know, to go build something on it, you're told you can't because you're in the 100-year floodplain. But the county never had, we didn't go through the whole process. We did years ago, but I thought it was done with. And so the reason, the purpose of this work session is, is for Wayne to go over with us so we completely understand where we are. It's pretty much being, our hands are being forced by the federal government, right or wrong. There's some good things about it because it's taken a lot of our houses out of the floodplain by buyouts and stuff and that's the good thing, I guess, Joanne. But then there's also things about it that I think are completely unfair because you've got Chesterfield and St. Peters and, and all these different people building these levees and forcing the river levels up higher. They're, they're increasing their property values by decreasing other people's property values upstream and that's how I see it. I think it's totally wrong. And so Wayne's going to explain that and that's my political perspective, but, and so we're going to have to deal with this. And you're going to have 4,000 very angry residents calling you, I'm telling you right now, because that means they're going to be, by state law mandated to have flood insurance. And that's very expensive and it decreases our property value and there's a bunch of reasons why.
Councilman, just so you know, we got the same letter in the city where I live. I mean, we, we just got a letter from them. Did you get one too, saying, hey, you know...
Did the cities send out their letters already?
No, no.
They just came...
Everybody within the county, every jurisdiction within the county, got their letter of final determination at the same time.
Okay, well, just go through, if you want to go through the process and, and because I, I can tell you right now that the, the residents will first be mad at us and we're just following the federal law, I guess. But go ahead, Wayne.
Okay, just real briefly, I'll just give you kind of a summary history of this thing because typically you don't have six years of time between getting these new maps and having to adopt them. But I'll get into that in a moment. In 2009, FEMA provided the county with new mapping and new hydrology. The mapping was based upon a lot more accurate surveying method using LiDAR, which from a vertical accuracy, it's within six inches. And so the mapping was greatly improved and of course, you had a new hydrology analysis of all of the major rivers and the creeks and streams within the county. The creeks and streams, for the most part in the past, had not been mapped. They, when they sent those, that information to us, of course, we reviewed it. We had to conduct some public reviews where we notified about 4,000 residents of, that their property is affected by some change. We did not notify, we did not notify people who are, who were already affected, only those that were getting a change from what they previously had under the, the current map and what the new one was proposing. We had those reviews, we did all of our notices and all of the processes that you have to meet and the buttons you have to hit for FEMA, we did that. In our review of those maps, we did appeal some things. What we did not appeal is the hydrology. One of the things that we found and why anybody would ever conceive of doing this, FEMA used, applied all this new data and laid it on the old map instead of using the new map that they had probably spent thousands, not tens of thousands, of dollars creating. So we're looking at the map and following it and, you know, the floodplain is going up over hills that are clearly out of the floodplain. And so we found that they didn't include the density floodway. I think Steve was one of the first ones that pointed out how they had mapped the floodplain around the, the railroad bridge up by West Alton and...
It's town in there and Newtown.
Right. So we ended up identifying, we didn't identify everything, but we identified enough things in a lot of the panels to be able to say, systemically, you've got a big problem with your mapping and we can agree with that. Make a long story short, they fixed all of those problems and used the right map and once using the right map, things were a lot better and, and they did address all of the things that we had noted to them. Then the big delay happened. People got all upset over how things were being mapped behind non-certified levees. You're probably very familiar with that as it, because we had one in the county, in the cit, there's part of the county there, most of it is city of St. Charles, behind the Bossard Creek levy, it's a non-certified levy. Illinois has all kinds of non-certified levees that before they were classified as protected by a levy, now the FEMA was indicating you're not protected and...
They said that those levees didn't exist. Look at it, it was there. But FEMA said it doesn't exist. It wasn't on their map at all.
Are they on the maps now?
No.
No, what they've, they are still wrestling with, how do I rate this ground that is protected by an uncertified levy? And I am not, I am not privy that they have come to a conclusion on what that is, other than Congress has pretty much dictated to them, you've got to come up with a way to rate those properties behind an uncertified levy and, and you're going to give them some value for that levy being there. What, how that ended up affecting us is we were given the option to seclude the Bossard Creek area, which means that we're going to leave that little area under the current map until there can be a more accurate study and a determination of how that place is going to be rated. Make a long Within the last, I can't think, must've been a couple of months ago, a couple of months ago, we received our letter of final determination along with all of the other communities in the county. They've received their letter also, indicating that the maps have now been fixed and determined and that you have six months or you have until January 20th, 2016 to adopt those maps or you will be removed from the flood insurance program. What I am proposing to do, we've, we've gone over those maps one more time to make sure that nothing's been pulled on us that we weren't aware of and everything looks like it is in order. And so while we're not right up to the deadline, I wanted to get it on your agenda. So in case you needed more time than just, you know, two meetings to think through this issue, you would have it and you wouldn't be put up against a wall. If you find that you can approve it in October, great, but if not, we built the time in to get it to you so you have that time to spend on it. What do the new maps show? In general, the basic, I mean, the, yeah, the, the base flood elevations on the Mississippi have gone down. Now, this is generally speaking. In some places, yep, they probably went up a little bit and others they went down. But if you look across the whole Mississippi riverfront and where the floodplains are, the base flood elevations of the 100-year flood have dropped. On the Missouri, they have gone up. Could all of the levy building over in Chesterfield have affected that?
Yes.
Probably has.
I was at a meeting over there 15 years ago and Defiance wasn't part of my district, but I was down there because the, you know, the confluence was. They just came right out and said that this would be a one-foot rise in Defiance. And, you know.
The, the adoption of the new map is required to maintain the county's participation in the flood insurance program. This program basically reduces, at the current time, you know, the federal government has been attempting to back off some of the subsidies of flood insurance.
As they should.
And, yep.
Aren't they bankrupt right now, FEMA?
Yeah. Here's one of the reasons why.
Well, they had huge payouts in Katrina and Charlie and...
Well, I guess, you know...
But basically they're going to, this program reduces flood insurance rates by basically subsidizing the rates for flood insurance. And most people who go out and get a mortgage end up with one that is federally insured. And those federally insured mortgages, the property has to be insured for flood damage. And so if you don't have, if you're not in this program, you won't be able to get subsidized insurance. And in order to have insurance, you will, if you can find it, you will pay a hefty amount. And I, and I don't think I'm stretching the point. It's almost to the point you have totally devalued that property because people will not be able to afford and will make a decision to go elsewhere. That's a very general statement, but we had, when the rates were being proposed to be increased and Congress got a little backlash, I know of one instance where somebody was proposing to buy a property, found out what the new flood insurance premiums were going to be and backed out of the deal. And that was up on the Mississippi. The rules also mandate certain restrictions about building in the floodplain. For instance, you've got to be one foot above the base flood elevation in the flood fringe and if you're in the floodway, you've got to be able to show a no rise. The, the regulations also provide that FEMA requires us to adopt is that a property that has been flood damaged and/or has had other improvements to the extent of 50% of its market value during a five-year period of time will have to be elevated or it has to be demolished.
So now, these are, these are, are these federal guidelines? Because this is, this is one I have...
It's federal, it's federal guidelines that we're required to have in our ordinance.
So do we have to follow that stuff? Like, so what that's telling you is you're, you got a piece of property that was, you got a piece of property that's in a 500-year floodplain, right? The federal government comes along and tells us they want us to change it to a 100-year floodplain because they let all these people build levees downstream, right? To increase their value and decrease our value. So now if you have a business or you have a property that was once in a 500-year floodplain, now is in a 100-year because the government's telling us that. So now if you have a successful business in this so-called 100-year, you can't let it grow because they're making laws to prevent you from doing insurance fraud, when insurance fraud is already against the law. And that's why they're doing the five, that whole cap, it just doesn't make any sense.
Again, the whole thing is, is really an insurance program. They're trying to reduce federal payouts during a disaster or after a disaster and they're trying to remove the housing stock from being subjected to damages by elevating or getting rid of the whole thing. They're trying to reduce losses. And to, to some degree, I, I think the program has worked. There has been a lot of properties that have used the insurance rider when they buy their insurance. There's a rider on it that allows them to, next time they get hit with damages, to elevate it and pays for elevation, I think up to around $33,000.
But they don't have, they don't have to elevate it.
Yeah, they don't have to.
That's why you have examples like this and FEMA won't let us actually give you the address. But these, these are five or four properties and you can see what the market value of the property was and you can see how much money FEMA has paid out over the years. You know, the very first one is a $78,000 house. They've paid over $400, $1,000 in claims over the years.
Well, don't they make you raise it though? I thought after 93, they make you raise it if they're not going, they'll either buy it from you or you have to raise it out of...
Two of them were elevated in 2009.
If you meet, if you pass the threshold of 50%, but that's calculated over just a five-year period of time. So every five years, that resets. I mean, you have a different five-year period every year.
So they're 10% damaged or 35% damaged.
10% and then 35 and then 45.
And then you go past the five and the one of them falls off.
So some of these get away with it for a long period of time. The positive end to this story is two of them have now been demolished and the other two are now elevated.
But, but Wayne, just to spin it back the other way, I, there may be, there are definitely people take advantage of it. But what I'm talking about, if somebody owns property that was bought in the 500-year floodplain, now the federal government's telling us it's going to, you're going to be mandated to put it in a 100-year floodplain and they're just changing the game. They're changing the rules in the middle of the game, you know? And it's like, then all of a sudden that, that property owner has to abide by all these new rules that he had nothing to do with. He was doing everything in good faith and following the law. And now all of a sudden, he's mandated by all these restrictions. I just don't think that makes a lot of sense.
Again, I don't, I don't want to necessarily defend FEMA, but the, somebody that is being moved from the 500-year floodplain to the 100-year floodplain means that whatever's taken place over the past number of years since the study was last done, that property is now floodable.
Let's say, that scenario that Joe just did, let's say a person with a, say a couple hundred thousand dollar average house in the county. What would that premium, you got any clue what that premium might be? It used to be pretty cheap flood insurance. I don't know if it is anymore.
Well, it's, it's not, it's, it's not bad if you're within the fringe and you've only got a foot or two impact.
Right.
And what the rate is, I don't know.
It's not the rate, Joe, the flood premium of this insurance is not really expensive, but it's all the restrictions that are added on to the new property owner.
I see, but I think we also have, I understand what you're saying, but I would be madder at the county if they didn't tell me I was at a higher risk of insurance or high risk of flood and I failed to, failed without that knowledge, didn't buy insurance. So maybe in a way, if those properties are more likely to be flooded, okay?
But they didn't know, they just found this out. That's what I'm saying. This is all new. But they, they, you just got the maps revised a couple of months ago, right? They just sent them to you, right?
They sent us the letter of final determination that the maps are now fixed.
Yeah. And so what I'm saying is, but last year, I was told I was in a 100-year floodplain, but there was never, but we weren't certain of it, but we... but there was never, but we weren't certain of it, but we had to go by the new federal, all they have. But that's what I'm saying, is nobody knows this yet.
No, but what I'm saying is, if I, if I, if I thought I was in the 500-year floodplain and I got a letter from the county and says, no, your property's in a 100-year floodplain, you should buy health or flood insurance, okay? I think I'd be happy with the county for letting me know that, so I'm smart enough to get that insurance so I don't have a loss.
Well, that's why we're having this meeting, we haven't adopted it yet. See, this is what the federal government's telling us that we have to do, but like Steve and I, it's like, well, I mean, I guess the advantage is you gotta have FEMA, I get it. You gotta have the insurance. It's just extremely aggravating that the federal government's come, what they're effectively doing is manipulating our zoning laws. Now, right or wrong, are these actually the floodlines? I don't know. I mean, can we argue that they are or can we argue that they aren't?
I tell you, if the current maps were based upon 20-foot contours, not very accurately mapped, and for instance, I just took a look at your property in Defiance, just for an example, because your property on the map, I mean, not your property, the house and the buildings were not within that 100-year flood zone. However, they really are. The highest level elevation of your property was 574, the base flood elevation was 575. The maps were totally inaccurate, and that's why so many people on the fringe of those flood zones had to pay out at least $500, if not more, getting letters of map adjustments for a variety of reasons. Their elevations have, were changed or they were always out of it. This new map is accurate, within probably six inches, I'm advised.
You said 20 feet contours, you meant two or three feet.
No, the current map is a 20, is based upon 20-foot contours, and so they were really eyeballing where these floodplains are gonna go.
Right, so you could be one foot over or 19 feet over.
Yeah. The current, the...
And it would look the same on the map.
Yeah, the proposed map is two-foot contours and the accuracy is within six inches.
Well, there's other parts too, though, that you gotta understand. It's just up in your area and up in his area, you're gonna be pushed, you got people in a 100-year floodplain that could have duck clubs and stuff, but now it's pushing them in the floodway, so now they can't do anything on their duck clubs, and that's another big problem. So it not only goes pushing people who were never in the floodplain, pushing people in the 500-year floodplain, pushing people who are in the 500-year floodplain in the 100-year floodplain, and pushing people who are in the 100-year floodplain in the floodway, which makes their ground useless.
Not telling the Mississippi, though. Mississippi's entirely different.
The Mississippi is, is going there.
All, in all spots.
In general, if you look across the whole thing, it has gone down, in fact, one to two feet.
And it's flooded more than it ever has.
Yeah. And the Missouri has gone up in places as high as four feet.
And the main reason it never, you know, when you have a flood, it never really predicts what's going on because each river is taken by itself, and when you have two rivers coming together, there's no computer model to say what happens when they're both there.
And just so everybody knows this too, it affects everybody's district because it's the creeks too, and so you're gonna have a lot of angry residents.
One of the things, the big difference is the creeks, while people may have been within a floodplain, it was never mapped, and so you'd have to go through an exercise during every time to see if they were floodable or not. Now they are mapped.
Yes, I'm meeting in the next few weeks with people that are in the DARTing that their flood elevations are changing and...
Yeah, it's also hard to sit down and to talk to these people that live on a creek that've gone through the floods of 93, 96, all the way back to 73, never had any flood issues whatsoever, and then all of a sudden, the federal government's coming and telling them that they're in a flood, they're within the floodplain. And it makes zero sense that, but the federal government doesn't look at historic floods.
You mean, they don't look at the facts?
They don't look at the...
True.
They're looking at the...
But they also don't, that's very true, but they also don't give us any leeway whatsoever. We have a choice of either adopt what they gave us and be able to participate in the flood insurance, National Flood Insurance Program, or not adopt it, and then we're, everybody that's, that has property is suddenly out and would have to get private flood insurance, which is exorbitantly expensive, if you can even get it. So they've got us...
Between a rock and a hard spot.
Yeah. Well, you guys, we gotta wrap this up, but I, we will be revisiting this again. I just was wanting to have this meeting because you guys need to get your feet wet on this one. Wayne or somebody or Joanne, you guys will be introducing something in October, so that's probably when you're gonna have a lot of angry residents, when, I don't know, who sends out the notices that...
We have met, we have not sent, we're not sending, we're not proposing to send out any more notices. We've gone through all of the public reviews and taking comments and...
But that was, but like I said, Wayne, that was five or six years ago.
It was. However, I mean, if you want us to send notices again, we can, but you're, if somebody has a problem, you can't do anything about it.
Well, should we post it on a website or something? Because what if someone's getting ready to purchase a home and they don't know?
What I'm doing in the communication, I'm, I've got a website, and if people are able to look at your agenda, they'll be able to go to that FEMA website and look at the current map and the new proposed map to see if they're impacted.
Wayne, no banker, mortgage company's gonna give them a loan until they, until they check and make sure they're not in the...
Actually, a lot of the mortgage companies, I've been told, even if it is sometimes close to your property, they require you to get flood insurance.
You know, maybe we could put something in the county newsletter about all of this too.
Okay, thank you.